All right, good evening all, welcome to the Monday, April 22nd, regular meeting of the Eastern Planning and Zoning Board. We are going out and/or being recorded on ECAT tonight. Welcome all. First up, it's continued public hearing for 661 Washington Street.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Scott, there we go from over there.
Stay near Mike.
And, uh, from our last meeting, Mr. Chair, we've made a few changes, a few items have come in and out. The first one was, we had our traffic report that was submitted and, you know, basically had no major, no major impacts to speak of. The, uh, the changes coming in the future on Depot Street, obviously, were, uh, were considered in the traffic report. Really nothing else, except for the stop signs and stop lines that we have within our site that we already have shown in the plan. So that item was submitted. We also-
Oh, enthusiasm, the microphone, please. Mike.
Thanks.
Thank you, Wayne.
We also had a site visit, as you know, a couple of weeks ago. Got a chance to talk to the neighbors out on the site, had a little bit of input, a few things that came up. There's a few trees right along the, the border that are on our property that we will be able to save. So I have those trees shown and highlighted in green. And there's a considerable line of shrubs along that western property line that falls right on the property line or a little bit onto our property that we'll be preserving as well, in addition to a six-foot stockade fence along that, uh, along that property line that we discussed out on the site. So we've, uh, we've made those changes to the plan. Going through the comments from the peer review from Woodwin Curran, we've hashed everything out. We've been going back and forth, almost on a daily basis. We've got it down to one item that we received from them that, just the sizing of a stormwater quality tank, that they want us to just increase the size of the tank. So, uh, we haven't had a chance to make that change and submit it back to them, but we certainly don't have any issue with, uh, with making that change. So, those are really the only significant changes we've made since the last time, Mr. Chair.
So just, uh, April 17th, is that the latest version of the plans?
Yes. That's correct.
Um, that's everything? Okay. Stephanie, do you have any?
Yes, um, I did review the traffic report and I did submit, uh, a report. And basically, what the, what Vanessa and Associates found and demonstrated was that they're really, they looked at level of service at each of the intersections and that overall, there was very little impact or change from the existing conditions and the no-build conditions with the proj- the proposed project. They did, as Mr. Feria just referenced, they did have a couple of recommendations. They indicate that, um, they, they recommend the access driveways be controlled by stop signs and, and they note that the signs and landscaping within proximity of the intersection be designed and located so that they don't impede the line of sight. They noted that there is some, um, overgrowth on the Depot Street where they're proposing the Depot Street driveway, um, if you're looking to the west, and that a large rock has been placed on the stone wall there that impedes the line of sight, and those should be remedied as part of the project. Uh, one of the comments I had about the traffic report is that they did not contemplate the effect of the project on pedestrian and bicycle traffic, uh, along the corridor, that Washington Street corridor as a result of the project. And of course, um, the board has been talking a lot, we've been talking a lot about the idea of this helping to make this a more walkable neighborhood and community, understanding that this is a Mass DOT road, so it, it is controlled by Mass DOT in the state. Um, we understand that improvements for, you know, there are sidewalks on both sides of the road, but they are in need of repair. Um, and there are no bicycle lanes. So my recommendation to the board is that you probably want to communicate to Mass DOT that you'd like to see when they do the roadway improvement, that road really is in need of repair and repavement, that they consider implementing or, um, including improvements to the sidewalk and bicycle lanes as part of the complete streets program that they're kind of mandated to follow. And the storm water report, you have a copy in front of you, and as Mr. Feria noted, there is just one water quality structure that needs to be resized. Everything else, um, looks good.
Okay, thanks.
So, this is Ed Walsh. So Stephanie, regarding the stone wall, just so we can address the stone wall, that current stone wall that they're referring to, you guys, if you remember being out on the site, it's the property line that's divided between where the Red House property line is today and the actual Plaza is today. Those two properties being combined, we're gonna be actually taking that complete stone wall out, and we want to restore that stone wall, but put it onto the house of the red property and bring it further over to, to find the transition for the Plaza as well as the Red House to give it that same historical look that it currently sits there today. I actually had someone out there on Saturday to give me a price on moving that, so that was already in the plan to be moved. So just so you're-
Yep.
-you're aware that's gonna be done.
Where's the stone wall?
It's-
It's hard to see, it's in like a, the row of trees-
Oh, it's on that, okay. I was thinking about the opposite side, alright.
Yeah.
Alright.
It doesn't even go back that far, it's only like, what, 30 feet long or something?
Not even, yeah, exactly. So you remember it for the moment, because it only goes back like 15 to 20 feet.
Um, so, over here, aside, do you guys have any questions or comments?
I was gonna ask Stephanie about, Stephanie, on the, um, you know, the complete streets recommendation, I know that's not part of really this anyways, but were you referring to Washington Street or the Depot Streets already been sort of laid out?
Yeah, Depot Street is already, right, that process is going to happen when they, when they redo-
And the sidewalk will be on the opposite side of the-
Yeah. Um, yes, and, you know, there'll be crosswalks at appropriate, but none of the traffic signals at Depot Street, none, none of those three traffic signals. We know the Washington, uh, the intersection with Washington and Belmont is to be improved as part of the Grease at Commons project under the developers' agreement. But the other, the other two is, well, there is no accommodation for pedestrians, and of course, there are no bicycle lanes along there, so.
So if someone were to walk, say, you know, east down Depot Street to go to the, the restaurant, and there were, and the sidewalks were actually eventually built, I mean, I suppose they, they just sort of take a left at that parking lot and there was sidewalk on the Depot Street?
Yeah, so there, there is a sidewalk on Washington Street right now.
On the Depot Street, that would-
Oh, on Depot Street.
Yeah, someone's coming from, so because Depot Street's supposed to have a-
Especially the apartment-
So currently, right, yes. Yeah, so Depot Street has no sidewalks right now. And that's definitely already put on that agenda of that new project that's starting next year, correct?
Right.
And that's gonna be on the, the sidewalk's gonna be on the opposite side of that street.
Yeah, so someone were to say crossing the street from, from that sidewalk across into the property to go to the restaurant, they'd probably take the, the back entrance near the Red House.
Correct.
Right, and then there's a sidewalk there-
Yeah.
-on the, on the south side.
Yeah, I, I would assume when they would put a crosswalk there, um, when that project is put in.
Sidewalk on the property, on your-
Is this the sidewalk right here on the property?
Correct, yep. Yep, there is.
So that would be, I think that's what you're asking, that they could enter onto a sidewalk, too.
Oh, I, I apologize, I see what you're saying, yeah, that would be actually ideal.
Well, there should be, it's, so there should be a crosswalk connecting to that sidewalk.
Right, right, so we probably need to talk to, um, I'll talk to Dave Field about that and see, because I'm sure that's not being planned as part of this project right now, a crosswalk there.
I don't really have any other questions or comments right now. Okay, Deb, do you have any?
No.
You're saying no?
Yeah, no, not right now.
How about over here, gentlemen?
Do you guys, I know this came up a couple of times, did you have a, have a definitive plan for the pickup and drop off of the buses? Like what's gonna happen with the school buses?
So, we spoke with Southeastern Regional, and what happens is, they design the routes around where the pedestrian traffic is, the pickup is, and since the predominant pickup area is on the right side, so I guess they come out of, as I understand it, they take a left, if you're thinking about it this way, down Black Brook, they take a left onto Depot Street.
Okay.
Heading down toward Washington Street.
Mm-hmm.
And all of their pickups are on the right-hand side. So it complicates-
Well, are there more reasons that you want a crosswalk there?
Exactly, a crosswalk, right, exactly. Um, so they don't anticipate that that flow necessarily is gonna change, 'cause a lot of the housing is on that side, I guess, just from their perspective. I haven't any, uh, but they said it changes every year depending on-
So that's Southeastern Regional. How about, how about Eastern Public Schools?
And Eastern-
So I, I reached out to someone that works, they have not got back to me yet, but what me and Scott kind of talked about was putting, um, a bench with, uh, some papers right here, which would be on the backside of that, if you scroll down a little more, we're not showing it really.
Hold on.
I guess we could do it in two locations, but on the property line of the Red House and with that, that Greenscape area is, yeah, right there, we'd have a bench there for pickup for, uh, for students there as well, for buses to pick up.
So parents can either walk or park there, depending on what the-
Yeah, so we could do it on, yeah, we could do it on either corner of the plaza. My recommendation, because of the residential building.
I think the buses do go down, go-
They do, yeah, they do, yep, 'cause-
So the Eastern Schools are heading-
They come right down Depot, so it would work fine, yeah, they do, yep. So we would put a bench.
Any chance you'd put a cover over that bench, so people aren't sitting in the pouring rain?
We could talk about putting something like that on there, yep. Most likely, what we're figuring is gonna happen, like, is if you drive around town and see the kids getting picked up and into all the streets, the parents are usually sitting in the car, you know, when it's raining, they're sitting in the car. So we figured that corner right of the parking lot is gonna be a spot where they're gonna congregate anyways, so that's why we thought it would be good to have a bench right there as well.
That sort of works until moving the stone wall back and over and all that stuff.
Yeah, that's all gonna be gone.
So that whole, those bar thing, yeah.
Exactly, yep.
So you'll just coordinate that with the landscaping to make sure-
Yeah, exactly, when that's done, at the start of the time, yep.
Or just leave umbrellas on the bench.
Yeah, but that was the location of where we were, we were talking about putting that.
Sounds good to me.
You good? Chris, you have anything?
I don't have anything, nope.
Um, so Stephanie, um, I, I think I may not have been paying attention for 30 seconds, so forgive me. Where are we at with the stormwater management? Are we sat?
They're essentially, they're essentially done. They're, they just have to provide the sizing for that water quality inlet, the one that's been identified. So, um, is that on the plans or in the calculations?
In the calculations, right.
That's a, that's a pretty easy, um-
Right. It's not even one page, it's, yeah, just a correspondence back and forth, basically.
Um, so, since I didn't have the large-size formatted plan as requested, I'm relying on slow technology here. Um, so, quite, I, the fence we talked about?
Yes.
I know you said six-foot stockade, it's, I don't see it noted on the plan, did I miss it?
Um, well, I'm not sure.
Right here, is this it right here?
Right, but it, but I mean, that might be, I thought maybe that was, 'cause it wasn't gonna go further, weren't you gonna go all the way to the street, but we're gonna drop down to like a picket fence or something?
Yep, there it is, there, proposed six-foot, nine-fence.
Right, right here, is it-
It's, it's like a big Z.
So I thought-
I think-
Oh, yeah. Just when we were on, I thought, again, this is, you can propose, so it's not gonna go all the way to the street along there?
We weren't-
I thought we-
We were talking of that area being landscaping.
Right, and the, the resident on that side, um, the, the part that was there, that doesn't see that view at all because of the shed, that's on background, if you recall, that part of the conversation.
No, I do, yeah, but like, so that's fine, I mean, I just want, I just wanna, you know, I thought, I, maybe I misunderstood.
We wanted to leave it open, because we thought that, like, the people in the Red House are gonna probably want a path.
Yeah, well, 'cause my concern was, I thought there was talk in the meeting that you were gonna go all the way with six foot, and I, I kind of wanted to step down, because the view that they were trying to block dissipate, it doesn't exist once you get to the houses.
Exactly, yep.
Um, and just, there's, there's not gonna be a tree behind the house like it shows, 'cause that's right where your, where your drainage is, right, so we should, next, um, so lighting photometric plan, do we, where, I know we discussed, is it in here? I just didn't see it online.
We did see it, yeah, a couple of weeks ago.
Right, so were there revisions to it? Like, remember, like, remember we, like, we didn't see them on the plan? Like, there were some ballers, but there was no lights.
But I've, just on this plan, I just highlighted in green where the lights are, just 'cause it is busy and it's hard to see.
Right, especially on this computer without a large format, paper plan.
Make your plan.
So-
The grading plan.
Yeah, it's actually showing on the grading plan, the landscape plan, and the utility plan, but-
Alright, I'll take your word for it, 'cause technology's not gonna allow me to see it today.
Yeah, you don't have a-
Oh, yeah, okay.
So, um, curb cuts are changing, obviously on 138, um, and I know on Depot Street, but that's, that's really, I've been to those public meetings. Um, and I know, once we approve this, this will go to the state, I guess, and then the curbing, is it granite curbing out there? What's on 138? Can't remember what's there. What's the, what's the, well, what's the curbing there, what's the-
It's vertical granite curbing now, right. Not so much at the intersection.
That's gonna be part of the project once it's approved.
Right, right, but it's all vertical granite, uh, you know, with the concrete sidewalk, so.
Um, and one last, last thing I have, remember way back, we talked about, I can't think it was, but remember those mile markers? You know, that little stone? You're still open to having, determining a location somewhere, and we'll, you know, we'll get either Historical Commission or Society to come up with a little interpretive signage, so, 'cause we can just note that in the decision, and I think location probably makes sense once you have structures up and-
Yep, I agree.
Right.
Is it one or multiple?
Well, it's outside one, it's not, there's talk of the, the old Dean Mill pieces, but that's inside of the thing.
Is that pointed one, the pointed rock in the yard is there?
Yeah, yeah, and the interior stuff, we can deal with during the architectural end of this. Um, so, is there anything that precludes us from closing?
Yeah, I had a couple more, your fence-
No, you, you had your chance.
Yes.
No, I'm just-
I just, um, the fence, but the fence will be on your property, not on the neighbor's. Yeah, okay, so just, it's just there to show that, okay.
Yeah, right where we discussed, we were there.
I mean, if he wanted it to go farther, would you be able to put it down?
Towards Depot more?
Yeah, towards Depot, yeah, okay, so you're open to that, I don't know.
Yeah, I'm definitely open to that, no, no problem at all.
Is that your recommendation, or would that be?
Oh, no, you know, if the, depending on what the neighbor wants, I suppose, what, 123 wants, I mean, just, he might be happy with the landscaping you're proposing, or he might want more separation from-
Well, I think that we've had that discussion, but it is gonna be blocked, we'd like to keep that portion open for the rest of-
Sure. My recollection, and again, we weren't deliberating, I just wanted to interject for a second, was I thought it was going all the way street, 'cause I remember thinking, okay, I can't say this now, but if, if it, if it goes to that point, I just, I wouldn't want, sort of from the houses forward, to be a six-foot-
Right.
Well, I'd better go down, 'cause it would just, that wouldn't be good for the property.
I'm just thinking, I mean, when you have a dump truck plow in that parking lot at five in the morning, and the guy can't like have a fire in his backyard, because all the people in the apartment complain, and if he wants a fence, then I'd say, give him a fence, and I mean-
Yeah. So that, the 123 is gonna be, existing part of the property that we own, so it'll be the-
Yep.
Right, and I think the comment-
Hold on, 125, I'm sorry.
No, 125, in the, in the butt.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That, that butt just walked in, just-
Okay, yep, yeah, I got you. Um, yeah, sure, and then just the, the landscaping between 123 and the parking spaces, that, that's, um, what is that?
Right here.
V? Yeah, 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 the V. Oh, wow, so no, between 123 and the parking lot to the east.
Right here.
Right, that area, right.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, what kind of, what do you have, trees?
Mm-hmm, yep.
Okay, yeah.
It's the, where we're gonna relocate the stone wall.
Yeah, so the stone wall, and they have some, they have some trees and bushes.
Yep, yep.
Alright, yeah, okay, that's all.
Yeah, I had two questions. One was, did the, the traffic study at all consider the opening that you're proposing on Depot Street in terms of like the amount of traffic that you expect coming in through that?
Um, I mean, they did discuss it, like, you know, talking about the levels of service in, in existing, uh, the entrances on Washington or Depot.
So is the proposed curb cuts actually more narrow than what's there?
On 138, for sure.
On Depot Street, it's, on Depot Street, it's about the same one. On Washington Street, it's a, pretty much a free-for-all, a giant curb cut, so we're definitely, uh-
Reducing it.
Yeah, reducing it, having a more direct, controlled entrance. On Depot Street, it's, uh-
Similar size.
Yeah, it's about the same.
Two hundred and twenty.
Yeah, it's about, you know, 24, a 30-foot opening right there.
And then my other question was related to the photometrics. So, um, the project has designer review, so are we basically just kind of doing an overview of the general, like, proposed, but then obviously, once we get the project, then we can-
That's how I understand it.
Discuss that, okay, yeah. Great, that's all for me, thank you.
Good.
Um, I just, one of the comments I had in my original, uh, property between the existing residence and the-
Red House?
Right, the, from the Red House into, is a-
Yep, so I can address that. So, on the existing Red House, there's a really nice piece of granite that comes down those side stairs that we all walked in, we went in that property, and that's gonna come right up to, not to the edge, but there'll be a, probably a 10 to 12-foot buffer. We're gonna create a walkway going straight towards the, the Plaza and make a path right there. And that's one of the reasons why we didn't want to bring the fence all the way up.
Right.
Yep. So, yep, that's already in the works.
That way, all the people looking for your office will go bother the poor people living in the house?
That's right.
Very important element of planning. Um, okay, is there anybody in the audience that has any questions or comments?
And then I-
Oh, sorry.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm just going through my original. I did comment that the plan didn't show loading areas. Did, is that something the board wanted to consider now, or wait until the layout in the buildings?
Well, I think we need to wait until the buildings are designed.
I thought that was-
I mean, there's, there's areas, they have the trucks.
I did see a loading area.
There are trucks on the plan.
I missed-
One of the restaurants.
And there was one, like, on the upper-
There's one on the north and south of the main building.
Yeah, there's two, two locations, yeah.
Yeah, we do show that.
Okay, so you show one right here.
Right, there's one on the other side.
Over by the gas station?
One over here, okay.
Yep.
And I think, right, we're gonna, for folks at home watching-
They're a little bit subject to change.
Phase two of this approval, this is sort of a master plan approval, um, and once we get to the more refined architectural, this is special permit, we have architectural approval here on the exterior, um, when we get more specifics on door locations that will affect light, lighting, ramps, deliveries, that's why, seems like we might be breezing over some of this, but we'll, we'll have a, I wouldn't say a second bite at the apple, just have a more refined look, sort of in phase two. Uh, you good, Stephanie? Anything else?
Uh, and then just a reminder to the board that, um, for this first phase, if you are voting to approve, you need to vote the waiver for the 30-foot setback, because they're asking for 22 feet. So, just a reminder on that.
On which, on which one?
138.
Along 138, these two buildings right here, yeah.
So, which were, is, are, are right under the-
Yes.
It was anticipated, as you probably remember when we did this bylaw a couple years ago.
Now, we have to put their conditions in the decision, or our agreement, would that be part of the-
The waiver, you would want to, you need to vote for the waiver.
Yeah, anyone put in the decision. But first, we have to see if we want to close the public hearing, which I'm trying to get to.
Just a reminder.
I just, I'm like, what's that guy that pushed a rock up the hill and it kept coming down? Anyway, so, okay, anybody in the audience, everybody sat there, anybody on the table? All good?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Would you like us to close the public hearing?
Yes, yes.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor. Thank you. I will now entertain further motions.
I'll make a motion to approve the, um, a waiver to the 30-foot setback on Washington Street. We need that as a separate motion, right?
Sure, we can. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor. Um, any other favors? Waivers?
Waivers.
Well, well, if you read the bylaw, I couldn't resist. Um, just since we don't typically break out the waiver, so is there, I don't want that to preclude us from any other waivers that we've raised.
I think you can build it into the, um-
In the decision, yeah, I just can't think of anything off the top, 'cause it would, given the structure of the special permit. Um, alright, so, no motion in any direction? Would be appreciated.
Approve it.
Sure, sure, I'll make a motion to approve the, approve the plan, the master plan, um, as submitted, with the inclusion of a bus stop bench, which is not currently shown on the plan, um, to be added.
In the historical marker.
And, and the, um, historical marker.
We had a fence for the, um, neighbor at 125 Depot Street if they, if they want it.
Was, didn't we discuss that?
Yeah, it's there.
And that's already there.
Okay, oh, well, going, if they want to go farther up the, if they want to go farther up their property.
That would be de minimis, I would think we can amend if they-
Sure, okay, alright.
I skipped Latin that day, you good?
It's a little strange, but de minimis.
Well, I, I consider his privacy as important as a, as a stone wall, though, but, yeah, yeah.
I think it just, I think, I appreciate it, but I think that the-
So there's no second?
Second, oh, okay.
There you go.
Total breakdown of rules.
Now we can discuss.
Alright, any further discussion, now that we've, just rewind the tape, Wayne, circle that back before the, uh, alright, we have our second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor. Motion passes. Um, just to remember, Deb is not voting on this one, 'cause you missed that meeting, so just, it's-
No, she could vote.
No, we, oh, we continue, I'm sorry.
That's right, right.
Forgive me, I didn't mean to, I just wanna, you're right, we continue. It's been a tough day, guys, it's been a tough day. But I was terrified by a rabid raccoon in the parking lot.
Oh, God, that will be all over the news.
Alright, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
We need to send another page.
Well, as soon as you want to come in for the architecturals.
Still want to do a slide donation?
Yeah, yeah, we have to, yeah, so, alright, um-
Do you guys still have the same team? You have a new team, okay, okay.
And, and Paul, you and Ed will follow up with me?
I'll, I'll call you tomorrow, I'll talk to you in the morning.
Great, thank you.
Someone left their umbrella.
James Klein.
In the room.
He's a little more customary, I don't know.
Oh, does he? Alright, uh, next up, A and R Planner, 11 Old Stable Lane, Robert Taylor Jr.
Andy and Marie.
Just going by the agenda. I did not write that. Andy and Marie. Um, do you guys, you just want us, you have nothing to present? Stephanie, I know your summary, that everything was in order, right?
Yeah, yep.
So if anybody has any questions, anybody in the audience-
I had it a couple of weeks ago, but it's pretty straightforward to me.
Motion to endorse.
I second it.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor. Motion passes, thank you. We are nothing if not expeditious.
That's up to, have I, I haven't signed it, no.
No, second.
No, second.
Oh, uh, yes, I second it, sorry.
Alright.
The board will sign at the end of the meeting?
Yeah, we sign at the end, sorry, we gotta-
They sign at the end of the meeting, so we can keep the meeting going.
Alright, next up, 58 Highland Street, A and R Planner, Jim Morrissey.
There's no one here for that one?
Alright.
I think that was pretty straightforward.
That looked fine, I mean, did you ever report it?
I did, I did, it's in your packet, yep. So, essentially, you can vote to approve Vote to approve that, but let me bring it up, this is Highland.
Stephanie, in the case like, in the case like this, are the wetland flags verified, or is it just, you just, it's up to the applicant's engineer to place them on the plan?
I do not know that they have been verified. I, I, did I check, I think I checked that.
Yeah, I was just looking at another...
I think I checked it, because that was...
It's something, no, no other application online at the Conservation Commission, I was surprised by how many...
Applications?
No, no, how many flags?
I don't know, I didn't, I, I saw them.
Oh, yeah, sometimes that, that happens.
They're, they're...
No, I'm pretty sure I checked this one to see if they did an A and R for that reason, because it's...
It would be something that Conservation would...
Why don't we ask, why don't we ask Scott, can you confirm, were the wetland flags confirmed?
Yes, I am. Well, no, they were, actually, we filed a...
An A and red?
Right, within, for the repair of the existing septic system to the house we had replaced. The septic system to the existing house, so the wetlands were established at that point.
But on a smaller product like this, our septic system, there's no peer, no, no, no one else actually verifies that the flags are in the...
The agent does.
Oh, the agent does?
The agent does on every, every, um, project that's submitted. Larger projects, we may have a peer reviewer go out, but the agent...
So, they're like, look at the plan and make sure it makes sense, and then, yeah, right, yeah.
Absolutely, and, and for exactly that reason, because it's not an exact science, and you can get out in the field and, and, you know, decide.
Anyone can make a mistake anyways.
In this buffer zone, if it changes ten feet, there could be buffer zone impact.
Especially where it's, because it's, what, what it's showing is just over forty thousand square feet, and if you, let's say, even just maybe, you know, three feet along the whole line, or ten feet in a certain area, that will affect that.
Right, so twenty by twenty would...
Would make a difference, right, right.
So, is this one lot currently that's going into two?
Right, exactly.
Not adjustment of lot lines, it's a creation of two lots.
Right, that we're dividing for the two.
And the...
And kind of, it's a little bit of a funky shape there, just trying to preserve the existing house, obviously, and the existing garage that's behind it. So, just trying to keep the required setbacks from the existing structures.
What about the width at the...
Yep, if, no, it met all of that, yep.
And the... How long, so, how long ago was this all confirmed, the wetlands?
A year.
Okay. And how long are those good for, three years?
Three years.
Three years, all right. So, doesn't appear to be any reason why we cannot approve this.
Right.
I would agree.
I bet you would.
Motion, motion to endorse the Form A and R.
Second it.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Thanks again, folks.
Thank you. Good evening. All right, next up is a pre-application discussion on Sawmill Village with Mr. Rick Linkin. Welcome.
Thank you. I hope that I've been here before, I'm normally kind of ZBA guy.
I'd like to think we're a friendlier board, but I don't actually, we, no, the, the new board is wonderfully friendly as also. We get to deal with friendlier matters.
All the boards are friendly.
That's right. Just do us a favor and just use the microphone when you start up for the folks at home, please, and thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, so I'm Rick Linkin, uh, I currently own the land. Actually, there's two parcels here, so the parcel that you're looking at is what we call the old foundry site, right on, uh, one oh six there. And we've been working on this for the past six or seven months, doing a lot of due diligence, environmental, uh, trying to lock down the wetlands line, some geotechnical, um, whole bunch of stuff. So, this development here is, um, complies with the whole compact neighborhood overlay that I think was done last spring. I don't think this drawing shows, so they are deeded lots with an association. All the houses are eighteen hundred square feet and under, um, all master suites on the first floor, which the CND doesn't care about, but that's just our take on the market. And we're hoping at some point, we're having some issues with some vernal pools on the other side, so I think right now, the plan is a walking path over an existing, there's a stream there now with like a two-hundred-foot-wide concrete culvert, you know, I think the old foundry, um, probably used that back and forth. So, we'd like to connect the two, originally, we were hoping to connect it with a paved road, I don't think that's gonna happen, um, because of the vernal pool, so it'll be connected via walking path, but not car. So, there'll be another, did I include the master drawing there?
No.
I may have it. I mean, I kinda wanted to focus the discussion tonight on just this left side, 'cause we're not as far along on the right side, you know, I was trying to lay this thing out and kind of gauge your, gauge your reaction to the whole thing. At least this gives you a sense of the whole, whether or not a couple here... So, again, that right side is, you know, we may lose some units over there, I mean, that's still getting, we haven't even really vetted that with the Conservation Commission yet, but we are locking the, the wetlands line down, but it does give you a sense of the whole, you know, secondary egress. And that'll end up being, maybe, a cul-de-sac down at the end of that, the development there on the, behind the houses. So, the foundry site, the, we envision like four or five feet of fill, that will get raised up quite a bit to kind of just grade off from one oh six slightly, works out for drainage, it picks the bottom of the foundations up and so forth. So, the houses, um, we've designed with garages in the rear. So, we kept all the garage fronts off the road, um, and I think that architectural is in there, maybe further behind a little bit.
Yeah, no, no architectural, listen, my set.
Frank's not that concerned with your architecture anymore.
Thanks.
This is, uh, BKA did this, Kerry Court, I don't, I think they're Brooklyn and Boston, you know, but I've been working back and forth with them a lot, um, you know, it takes a bit of work to try and, you know, they're narrow lots and trying to keep the garages in the rear, and so this is what we've come up with. We like it, kinda hoping you do. It's a non-age-restricted development, so it's not over fifty-five, even though the master suites are on the first floor, I think that's probably what we're gonna get a lot of, but it's not gonna be age-restricted. All of the houses, because the garages are in the, in the rear, have longer driveways, you know, that's the clubhouse there that has also been designed. The landscaping on that front drawing is actually per, we hired some landscape architects just to give it a first look, so that is per plan, but... Wide open for discussion. I don't know if we talked now about the whole, you know, the, the traffic light up front and the...
Yeah, I'll get into that when we...
All right. But part of this plan has ten feet that we're giving, and we even, uh, expanded it a little bit, thinking the town may want a little more width, but right now, uh, we were gonna, afford the town, uh, ten feet on a land in, you know, in case the road gets widened with a turn lane and a, and a signal there, if that happens. So, we pulled the, we pulled the development end quite a bit off of one oh six. And there's a task board, in case you like Dennis. Well, we know it's, we hope it's sewn, but that's, I think that's starting here in May or June, but that's the, I think the genesis of this whole thing is the, is the sewer going by. There is existing septic there on the foundry, which we can use, that could probably support maybe fifteen houses, so we, we're actually designing this thing, you know, if it, if it moves that fast, um, to use that leaching field out there and then tie into the sewer, you know, as soon as it comes by, 'cause I don't think the sewer's until...
I don't know, I, yeah, I think you're in, you're kind of midway, right?
Yeah, I talked to, they called me actually the other day, 'cause they wanna use the site for storage and fill and all that kinda stuff, so, um, they were talking two thousand to twenty, I think, for livening up that front part of the line.
Yeah, they're getting ready to start, um, probably mobilize the end of June.
Yeah, pretty soon.
That's what I was just told, and then, um, it'll be a two-year pro, a two-summer project.
Right, I think there's a lot of fill come out too, they said, 'cause it's, uh, you know, some of the cuts are ten, twelve feet, I think, for the sewer line, so... Guys?
Yeah, that works out.
How about, um, how about the water, are they asking, we open questions?
I just wanna see if he's, so...
I'm sorry.
Okay, so, I just wanna go, so this is, keep in mind, it's not a public hearing, you know, this is just a, so we don't wanna get too specific, this is more to kinda introduce the board to the project. Couple things, you know, we, under the bylaw, um, we have the, the options to, um, you know, as a special permit, to, to request affordable units or perhaps, um, linkage fees mitigation.
Mitigation.
Kind of discussions we'll have at a different time. In some of the preliminary discussions that we've had with, with town staff and with Rick and his team, is that as we've always known with this site, we would absolutely have to have a, a turning lane, so, you know, you, you know, you have the ten feet laid in there, so we were talking in-house today and, and previously, so we need to, the next week or two, get a meeting together so we can figure that out, just make sure we, we have enough, you know, talk, talk to the state and get what we need before you get too, too deep into everything.
And by the way, McMahon is in the middle of the traffic study too, so...
Right, yeah, so that's good. And, uh, we have exterior architectural approval on this, excuse me, and it's regaled, capped at eighteen hundred square foot a unit, uh, two bedrooms, um, and, and then eventually, so are you, when you come with your full set, are we gonna be doing both sites, do you think? Or this is the first time I've seen just this one, I thought we were always doing both, but we haven't talked for a few weeks, or you don't know yet?
No, we should, we should have both sites.
So, not that we can't do one at a time, just a...
I need to kind of, at that point, I need to kinda parallel with Concom to kinda figure out how it's gonna work out with the vernal pools and stuff and detention ponds and...
And Greg and I were talking today, um, just generally, that you probably want to do a dual path, so that you don't get too far with one or the other, and then have to make major changes.
Yeah, this side, I think, is much easier with Conservation Commission, predisturbed and all that, the other side, it gets a little tricky.
Yeah, and my comments today were, were more with, I was kinda concerned with the connection road, that, that could change quite a bit with Concom, but it sounds like you've gone up the road with that, so is that pretty much...
We haven't talked to them yet, I'm just making the assumption that, you know, given my experience, I don't think that's gonna be, uh, defined too tightly, but maybe.
And, and I was just gonna ask you about the traffic study, but you did, so, all right, so that's kind of how, how we, we got to this point, and, um, so...
Did you wanna ask about the environmental?
Yeah, I was just curious, 'cause I know there's been a lot of chatter in town, so when we, you know, when we get to the point of an open, um, you know, public hearing, you know, if we could, you know, before then, or, or at least at that point, I wouldn't mind getting a summary of where, you know...
Kind of what?
The, the history of this thing, where the, you know, the, through a phase two...
Right, I mean, there's, as you can...
Et cetera.
As you well could expect, you know, it's an old foundry site, a lot of the, um, you know, chatter that we are hearing is that there's a presumption of contamination on site. I know that you did, uh, site assessment before you purchased the property, and if you could maybe just summarize for the board at some point, um, what you found and the cleanup efforts that you may be required to go through.
Sure, so, um, I do have background in environmental, so we were careful before I went to site, so we, we machined on the site, there's test bits everywhere, we tested the groundwater, soil, and the groundwater is perfect. The soil is clean, um, what is out there down deep is this inert material, and it's just the, the slag from the old foundry, but it's not hazardous. There was one little hotspot, which was removed, and by little, I mean, like, twenty feet by maybe ten feet, just a real small area, dug it up, trucked it off, uh, did all the analytical, filed a report with DEP, and DEP approved everything, and it's just no fur, what they call no further action. So, the site's done, the site's clean. What we've offered is part of the project to Conservation Commission, although, I mean, we haven't formally been there yet, other than just locking down the wetlands line, is to clean up the stream, so there's some old barrels out there, there's this big, you know, concrete culvert, which we'd like to rip out, and maybe do just a little tiny wooden bridge, you know, originally, we were gonna do it for cars, now, you know, maybe just a walking path or something, but just clean up the whole area, and that kind of will be, might be the mitigation for Conservation Commission. But we haven't had that discussion yet, so I don't know how far that's gonna go with the vernal pools, and that's, that negotiation is to take place.
Yeah, there's only been...
That's the, that's the master plan.
Okay, yeah, there's been a lot of talk through the years, you know, sort of the, the Emerald Necklace of, of green space that we have in the vicinity of this project, and, and with that little, I guess we'll call it connector path now, but it would be nice to work in, you know, you know, a couple benches, couple little paths, kinda connect that through.
I think it's close to that path.
Yeah, it's in that neighborhood, right.
So, the, the newer plan on the other side, I'll keep calling it, we've got parking down there to maybe offer to the town, and, you know, if people wanna park there, and, again, I don't know how close that, that path is, yeah, right there, right.
Well, and that was one of the things when we did the visioning session for the Five Corners as part of the DIF process, um, back in September, the residents and even business owners talked about creating connections to the green areas and the recreation areas, so, and it's, you know, in very close proximity, right across from, um, Old Pond and, and proximity to New Pond too, so...
Yeah, so that could work out.
Yeah, so that's...
And then one of, one of the other things we talked about was, um, maybe the board would like to do a site walk, and we'd probably like to do a design review team meeting, so, you know, again, um, very soon, within the next couple of weeks, so that you can get input from the other permitting boards, and, and maybe even, we haven't done this in the past, but as the part of the site walk, do a joint meeting, do a joint site walk, it wouldn't be a meeting, but have the planning board and, um, the members of the DRT join us for that, so...
What I could do too, I just thought of, is maybe get centerline, you know? Staked out fifty foot, so you can kinda just walk the proposed road, the foundry side's easy, that's wide open, the other side gets a little thick.
Does Concom do sidewalks?
They do, so we could do the whole...
Do a joint one there too, 'cause it's a large enough project, you know, so, um, anyway, so now, so I just, we just kinda wanna give you that overview. So now, since Wayne was so eager, I'll let him go first.
Actually, my question was probably, uh, probably a little too premature, so I'll hold off on that.
Okay. You know, I think, and again, we, where this isn't a public, we don't wanna be too, but, you know, personally, I look and I'm like, okay, you know, I like, I like the scale, and I, and truth, I, I've seen these, uh, previously, you know, for a while, but I, I think the scale of these is like, keeping, you know, when we, when we write these bylaws, we think about things, and I like, you know, it mimics sort of the balloon framing, you know, not, not everything's twenty feet high with, starting at the gutter line, um, kinda reflects the size of the houses.
Yeah, the intent is like no vinyl siding, so it's all either a wood composite or a fiber cement, or, so, it'll be a, a nicer finish at least. fiber cement, or, so it will be a, a nicer finish at least on the, on the exteriors.
What, like, so the units here, and I guess maybe there's a grading plan, grid, units on, I guess that, yeah, the southern side, I remember at one point, a real planetary plan, they were like, stay, you're using, is that, does, are the garages acting as retaining? Oh, they're still there, I still see the stairs, so, so it still drops off?
It does.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, um...
So how are you going to dress that garage wall, just going to...
Actually, I'm going to, the garages at least on the perimeter lots are going to have the corrugated, they'll be structural garage slabs, so they'll walk under, right under the garage, right, so that'll be your walkout outback, so. A little more expensive, but it's the only way you can work this out with garages in the rear, which I like.
House has retaining wall.
There you go.
Works, yeah. So is there anybody on the board that has any questions?
Yeah, how many units were you thinking for the other side?
I think right now, without the vernal pool discussion, I think we have fifty-four in total.
Okay, right.
So, it's, it's almost half and a half.
And you're considering a traffic light at both entrances, or just one, or what?
The traffic light gets a little deeper, we're, as part of the CND, we're going to contribute a certain amount per unit to the town for a traffic light.
Okay, so, but that would only be on, only on this side, not on the other side? The other side would just be, would be up to people to somehow take a left to target?
Correct.
I mean, I suppose, there are houses there, I mean, where people...
Well, just, obviously, we know this is a very congested part of town.
Yeah.
So once the traffic, there may be, you know, you're going to take a right turn, I mean, there's, you know, there's a long way...
I mean, the traffic light itself would sort of slow down traffic coming from that least, then there'd be a light at both directions, so there would be some gaps at least, right?
Yeah, we've had, you know, in talks with the DPW director, you explain the process of, of traffic lights, and he, he, his opinion was, it's not really a queuing problem right now, it's more, it's always a backup anyways, so the thought was, okay, if we get a turning lane, that will certainly help, because it's, the backup is caused by folks that want to go left on the corner. And, you know, so I, I think event, you know, some, one of the questions I have is, okay, can we, to be, you know, will we be able to create this turning lane, or space up while they're repaving the road after the sewer line?
So, I mean, so would a traffic study be, be like pointless, because there's going to be a, more of a, a town has to do a traffic study on how to do the intersection?
I wouldn't say pointless, no, because that's, that's how, that's how turning lanes and light design of the traffic.
Yeah, but the, the town has to, well, someone has to actually do the intersection plan, so that, right, so once you know the units, then...
Right, that's, well, that's a big part of the...
But the traffic study should contemplate what would, you know, the, the idea of adding...
It'll have pre-impulse.
You have to have an idea of what's going to happen at the intersection at the same time that you, yeah.
Yeah, I think the road can't be designed without it, obviously, it's a key element of it, and it would involve bringing in the DOT and, and...
Right, but either way, so the traffic study would just have to sort of do its best job contemplating that, whatever the town ends up deciding to do with that, with that area.
Well, I think the traffic study will help determine whoever designs that portion of the street, the, the solution.
Right.
That's a key, I mean, that's a key element, I mean, I guess any traffic study, right, contemplates, I mean, that's, you know...
But it might be an opportunity now, if the money is there from the development as to, you know, what does it look like with the turn lane?
Right.
You know, traffic lights, you know, probably phase two at some point, but it'd be a nice opportunity to at least get the turn lane in and widen the road.
Yeah, right, that, I'd like to see, so, okay, we have the sewer, so I'm thinking, okay, so that, right, there, sewer's wrapping up end of 2020, right? End of summer 2020, I think, so, well, if that's the case, then they're going to obviously be repaving, or, you know, whatever the spec is.
Right, yeah.
Is it possible, and I don't know, because again, it's, it's a state road, but wouldn't it be nice if we could get this portion of it designed and, and then get that turning lane paved as their...
Yeah, I was just trying to understand how these different, like, steps are going to happen.
Because that, those two scenarios, that, those will, I would think, those are going to weigh heavily on decisions that, through the site.
Because you know how things go, sometimes, you know, you have a couple different phases, and then a few phases get done, and then the traffic light, you know, sort of just is a, you know, a different phase, that just doesn't really happen as quickly as you might expect, and then, it looks good at the beginning, but I know this is only two, one or, one or two phases, but at the same time, you know, it's the way...
Yeah, traffic lights are, are time-consuming, and, and I, you know, and the, kind of controlled by the state in many cases, especially on a straight road, that's why I think personally, the, the, the turning lane is, is, is much more, you know, we're, we're going to see that sooner, and the question is, you know, how soon, and again, that, that will reflect on decisions made regarding this project.
Yeah, all right, sure.
In terms of...
I've done deceleration lanes, widened, we're getting, you know, it's bridgewater, and we got through pretty quick.
Yeah.
Lights take a little while, so...
But that's a, we, we were just talking, you know, that's one of the first things we'll be, we've had some meetings over the last year or so anyways, with everybody in house, now that we have a more definitive plan, now that it's time to, you know, we'll dig into that deeper, so.
So, were you saying that this road right here is the one that might not really happen, that would potentially really be more of a pedestrian path in all likelihood?
Yeah, honestly, I'd like it to happen, it'd be nice to have a cohesive development, just don't know, you know, until we get in front of Conservation Commission and the mitigation discussion and all that stuff, but whether it's a walking bridge, or I was even hoping for like a little, whether it's a one-way road, or a, you know, like maybe eighteen feet wide, something very small to try and keep the impact down, but wood, you know, with the wood railing and the little lights across it, done nicely, but that's...
Yeah, Stone Hill has a nice bridge, it's not eighteen feet wide, but that's, it's a pretty nice...
Yeah, I mean, it's, we've done it on other developments, but again, you know, this is, this gets sensitive with the whole discussion with wetlands, so I, I don't know.
Yeah, so I do definitely really like the possibility of there being a connection, and I also really appreciate your effort to have the garages in the rear and to sort of create a more neighborhood environment.
Thank you, I take a little credit for that.
So I think that's something that is, is a nice quality that you, you know, you see in, in even the village a little bit, and I know it's, it's hard to introduce new construction sometimes with, um, like a slight, it's not really new, but it's new for Easton to some extent, so...
Well, definitely makes it more expensive, the house construction, but I, you know, I think it'll, uh, the neighborhood will support it, you know, certainly Easton.
So I, I, I really support that effort, and my only other comment without getting specific, but you mentioned, uh, first floor bedrooms, but you also mentioned, uh, the, the site needing to be built up, and in the renderings, I see steps and so forth, and I think it would be an added bonus if you were able to consider some universal design, maybe via the garage entry, or some features to maybe incorporate that could help.
You mean the ADA stuff?
Yeah, I mean, universal design is a little bit broader than ADA specifically, but I think, yes, incorporating some of those elements that would be, um, you know, not just for aging people, but, you know, people maybe that are looking for, um, more barrier-free type...
Oh.
Homes, you know?
We do have a home, I haven't included it, because we were looking at, I hate the word ranch, you know, but single level living, but if we do that, we'd go one car garage, but, uh, we could do something like one and a half, but if we had more room in the garage, or, you know, stuff like that, it would help.
But is the idea, if you have foundations, sort of go on top of the existing, you're not going to try to dig down into the existing soil, like, you're going to go like, start the foundations at that, that's why you're going up four, so you have like eight at that?
Well, that, no, it really went up just to, you know, make the grading nice, you know, I thought it was, it's flat, but if you, when you look at the topo from the surveyors, I mean, it, it drops quite a bit by the time you get...
That's just...
Yeah, that's, so, um, but the advantage of that is we can lift those footings up quite a bit, keeps us out of the flood, you know, the stream goes by, I mean, it, it makes sense for a whole lot of reasons. The only thing that, um, makes more expensive is when the garage are in the rear and retaining walls and stuff like that, but I think it could be done really nicely.
So the ownership, the units are individually owned, um, the landscaping is by the...
Association.
Association?
Right, right, so there'll be...
Do you have covenants in place, you're going to have covenants for...
Everything.
Everything?
Right, rules and regs, you know, but the, um, the roads, the detention ponds, the clubhouse, you know, all that'll be owned by the association and, and kept up, so fortunately, in this case, uh, we don't have a sewer to maintain, or a pretreatment system or something, I mean, so that makes it nice.
How do you decide between a tennis court and a pool, a tennis court's more...
I haven't, yeah, no, there's a bit of a conversation going on, I want the tennis, a lot of people want the pool, so.
Are you, are you going to live there?
I've thought about it, actually.
That will kind of dictate what it is, right?
Yeah, that would be a nice development.
Tennis court might be a more pleasant write-off for one oh six than a pool, but I don't know, well, he's showing some landscaping.
I think more people would use the pool, even if they don't swim, just to sit around, you know, wine, or, you know, the clubhouse is right there, I'm sure it'll get more use, so, that may be the way it goes.
Also, I asked, I just forgot to ask something, where, most of the backyard is going to just sort of like slope right back, or is it going to be sort of, do they have like some flat space in the backyard, or?
It'll be down though, yeah, those perimeters. Right, but maybe a topo in there.
Well, you could see, you could see that it...
It's a lower level than the...
Yeah, I saw a lot of lines, that's what, yeah, but, I see.
No, see here, back in the lens, because these are all actually as the change, so it's basically flat in the back.
Yeah, yeah, it's sort of flat.
Other than the bioretention, I imagine.
But there's plenty of room for retention and detention, and that actually has been conceptually engineered, you know, and we stopped just to make sure, see where this thing goes, but everything works.
Well, yeah, I guess, without having to, you know, put it in septic systems, you have a lot more space for all that.
Right, exactly.
Where is that existing septic system you talked about?
It's up there, I saw you guys point, you see the, uh, little cul-de-sac over there?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, that's all cleared out, and it's, and I guess, from what I was told by Board of Health is, they upgraded that whole leaching field before they closed the foundry down, so, it's in pretty good shape.
Yeah, fairly used, I think, I recall, yeah, it wasn't used much.
Oh, so you can build as many houses as that will handle till I used to get started, and then right by the time everything else, then you'll have, at least, like, put the road in.
Yeah, it should work out pretty good, yeah, maybe, maybe it's twelve or fifteen hours, something like that, I can't remember what the capacity was.
Yeah, so they'll pay for the road and everything, and then you get the sewer and you're done.
So, this site plan shows sixty-two units, but you say you think you're down to fifty-four?
Fifty, yeah.
There's thirty-five.
That's an older, the aerial there, I wanted to just bring it up, but that hasn't been updated, so there's no way it's going to be sixty-two.
Anybody else?
I just have, so the dark green area, is that all the buffer that's the limit of work? The dark green, because you showed the lots...
Yes, I, I'd still, because I can see one spot, like, right here, you know, that there's no way the buffer is drawn around that, I have a funny feeling that they just ran a light green area for yard, so, um, the, the hundred foot and the two-hundred foot on the vernal pools aren't on there. The foundry side, that's all kind of pre-disturbed, so that one's a little bit easier.
Yeah.
Um, one question I had was, on this portion of the site, you have like some areas for additional parking, was there like, what was the reason for that compared to not being in it over here, I guess, I don't know.
Well, yeah, the clubhouse has got most of the parking over there, actually, I think the new, the new site might have more, uh, no, it's just got that.
Similar, yeah.
Yeah.
I just didn't know if that was designed for any other...
I think there's more on the more, on the current plan.
Gotcha.
Um, I think the advantage this development has compared to some of the other ones I've done is there's more, a lot more depth on these lots, so the driveways are much longer.
I was going to say the same thing.
Yeah, the other ones, we have twenty-five, thirty-foot driveways.
The guest compartment driveway is just so long.
Yeah, everybody parks in the road, and it was always tougher, yeah, so...
That's a good, that's a good selling point for it.
Anybody else?
You're showing sidewalks?
You haven't gotten that far yet. That'll be one to...
There are sidewalks, I mean...
Kind of looks like it, yeah.
Around the, uh...
On one side?
Central core, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
In white.
That's always been a...
And crosswalks.
Yeah.
They have crosswalks on there?
Yes, yeah.
I think they took it that far.
They did, yeah.
The sidewalks in, in more dense developments, we've always, like, run up against this debate with different towns before, um, if they're real tight, nobody uses the sidewalks, right? The kids are out in the road, people are out in the road, because it's a controlled development, and then when we pull the sidewalks off the back of berm, it gets way up into the driveways and, and that two or three foot strip dies out all the time with grass, nobody knows how to irrigate the thing, so, I mean, that's, we're way down the path here with the discussion, but that's just my, my take on some of the sidewalks in these developments.
That's why we love granite. But I would, yeah, but I would think, the one thing, I mean, I understand what you're saying, and we have, you know, we have a project currently under construction that we waived, they, they put the sidewalk up butting the berm for that, for that very reason.
Yeah, right.
And with the layout, you had, I think it was an eighteen inch grass strip, and, yeah.
I would vote for there, though, a lot of times, they'll allow that, and then they've got to keep that berm, which is a little dangerous, you know, at a minimum, either granite, or you need a vertical concrete to, you know, catch a wheel if somebody's not paying attention, so...
Thing is, with this dense of a development, I don't know if you'd want to rely just on the street, you know?
I agree, yeah.
Just because, I mean, it's, you know, it's just, so, but, and, and luckily, given the layout, you know, it's, it's on the, yeah, it's around the core.
We have the room.
It's on the core, so it's not like it's all, you know, the linear footage isn't, isn't too bad. Well, um, yeah, so, first, we appreciate you coming in, and, so I guess, do, do you have a ballpark idea when you're going to file for the, is it just a few months out or a couple of weeks, or?
File anytime.
So, I'm just thinking, do we want to set a date for the site walk now, or do you want to kind of coordinate this all in line with...
Why don't we coordinate, because we're going to have so many, I mean, it's the planning board, the Conservation Commission, and the DRT.
Let's just make sure, let's throw out, you know, let's throw out multiple dates, since we're going to be talking to so many people.
Right, are there any other ti, other, I mean, just because we have this group in front of us, are there any time?
Hey, that's a really...
I'm sorry?
A month or so?
A month from now?
Because I'd, I'd actually like to get the Conservation Commission...
Yeah.
Once to lay out, you know, so they don't, they're not surprised.
One concern I have, and I don't think it's much of an issue, I can't speak for Concom, but Concom and planning joint is fine, but if you're going to do the DRT, I mean, I know for this board, typically, it seems like evening or later after, you know, five o'clock meetings are better, I don't know if that's going to work for the town employees, so...
Well, we will invite them to what works for the boards, yeah.
Right, I'm just saying, I mean, a one o'clock meeting is not going to work for the, I don't think for the board, I don't speak for everybody.
Right, no, I understand, yeah.
People work distances away, so, just...
Those will let the site dry out a little bit.
Yeah, that's pretty much...
Not tomorrow anyways.
It's not really planned over there, but...
So, so you're saying you'd like about a month, so you can...
I think that, yeah, because it'll give you time for Conservation, and the, kind of get a little further along with the other side there.
Okay.
Yeah, we've seen the preliminary, so, right, before we get into the definitive, it would be nice to have it so that we can, you know, I think it'd give us a smoother process.
All right, why don't you just, you and I just stay in contact and figure out, and we'll take it from there?
All right.
Good?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
It's an audible sigh, forgive me. Let's do the minutes first, get that out of the way, from Monday, April eighth. Yeah, I just like...
Is there something in the minutes?
I like just, I like one of the paragraphs of here.
And now I have to go find it.
Wondering how do it reverberate?
Do I have a coffee?
I said it. That's it.
You probably didn't, that one for me, because I always, yeah, I do, I do.
Mr. Strange stated he would give his report at the next meeting, something tells me that'll be in these minutes also. Little cut and paste.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for April 8.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
Hearing none.
All those in favor? And you know what, forgive me, Stephanie, I forgot that that was a continued public hearing, I didn't mean to skip over that, the zoning stuff.
Oh. Wait, wait, here, I have.
So we'll jump back, and we'll do, so continued public hearing.
I was just going to ask, where are we at?
Eastern town code, so this is two items or one?
There are two, no, it's. No, there were two, there should be two items, there is the.
No, one we voted.
They already voted on that?
Yes, we voted.
Oh, okay, oh, that's right, no, I was, that's right, you voted on the, on the CNOs, you did, on the compact neighborhood overlay district, I was wrong when we talked earlier.
I, I forgot.
We did, it's for N5.
So, right. So it's just on the, the proposed change to the table of uses.
So, so, Carl, this goes back to the, the changing of the Elium Munsonary zone at Stonehill, and I think, as I expressed, my concern was that I thought it was just a bit premature, you know, other times when we look at changing zoning, and this has been the Elium Munsonary for a long time, and that has lots of complicated, or potentially complicated.
Ramifications.
Ramifications, thank you, so, and I thought, okay, well, if and when, and, and looking at where things hadn't progressed in terms of the potential development of a potential site that far, and given that we, you know, we have town meetings twice a year, we've always had a special town meeting as, as long as I've been involved, so if, if and when the need arose to change the zoning, or change the zoning totally for that, we certainly would have ample time, and I think that would give us more time to, you know, to maybe have a potential proposed project that we could ask specific questions of, versus just doing it, and I think, I don't know, Stephanie, do you have any thoughts on that, or?
No, I think that makes, I think that makes sense.
So I thought it was just a bit premature, and we're not, this is not stopping anything, you know, there's just not a specific project in time, and, you know, in the past, there are many times that we've worked on changing zoning, we've talked, we've had maybe site plans or specific projects, or, or other ramifications, and questions, you know, I'd be like, okay, so a, a, how does this, you know, a proposed hotel on Stonehill property, how does that affect taxes and fees?
Yeah, there's a lot of, there's a lot of big questions.
Questions that haven't been answered yet, and are a little bit above my pay grade.
You know, I mean, really, if you look at what's allowed so far, I mean, it's really been a longstanding sort of thing that it's, you know, I think it looks like social clubs are the only thing that really, you know, is obviously, yeah.
Yeah, and it's, yeah, so, and then, and that coupled with some things that I said last week in our last meeting, so I think, you know, I, I was hoping, and maybe we just table this for now, and, and there didn't seem to be any pushback when I proposed that in town hall, but.
Creaseit Commercial District B and Creaseit Commercial District C.
Unless anybody feels differently.
I'm fine with it, I, I, you know, I have to ask myself why it, why it's here in the first place, but.
Why what?
Why, why is, why has it come to this point, I mean, it would be nice if there was an advocate for this, if that person would present themselves and explain their advocacy.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to say, but I was not nearly as concise.
Yes.
Which, but you all know that long, long before tonight, so do we need to take any action on this, to table it, or do we just, we just close?
You should vote to table it, I think, or, and take it up at some other point in time and not advance it to town meeting.
Okay.
So we'll close the public hearing first?
Sure, yeah.
Do we, right, motion to close the public hearing?
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Motion passes.
Yeah, so then you need a motion to table it.
Yeah, too bad, she said it perfectly, but it's kind of too late to say so moved.
Would you like me to say it again? Would you like me to say it again?
Yes, yes, say it again.
To when?
A motion to table it, and to take it up at some other point in time, and not to advance it to town, this year's town meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Sorry, I suppose.
Could you repeat that?
One more time. I'll work with her on when.
All, any further discussion? All those in favor? All right, thank you, I have no idea what this next one, MS4 general permit.
Oh, oh, the MS4, so the MS4 permit, and I will never say it right, it's the.
Town stormwater, right?
It, it's the stormwater sewer system, right, then there are four Ss that go with it, and it is your general programmatic permit under the non-point discharge elimination, pollution elimination program, and it is the EPA mandated stormwater management requirements for every town in your, your town stormwater system. So they have tightened up the stormwater management requirements, in particular, any site that is being disturbed in the past, any site over an acre needed to have a NIPD's permit, you needed to have a stormwater pollution prevention plan during construction periods, and all your erosion controls in place, they've expanded that, you need to, now, any site where there is earth disturbance, there's project where there's earth disturbance, they have to have adequate stormwater prevention erosion controls on site to prevent erosion into the stormwater system, they've tightened up the levels of phosphorus that the systems can accept, because that has a negative impact on the receiving water bodies as well as nitrogen in, into the system. So there's a requirement to do a public hearing, and Greg Swan would like to do a joint presentation to the planning board and the Conservation Commission, so this is on here to just put that out there, and then we'd need to come up with a date that works for both boards.
As long as we're on top of the masthead.
So this relates to sort of like if, if a road's reconstructed, then you have, sort of like subjecting the town to similar standards as other projects might.
Yes, and they already are under the mass DDP, right, but it, it goes even beyond that, again, just, again, the phosphorus testing and phosphorus loading and trying to prevent that loading into the system, and keeping the erosion on site, you frequently will see projects, even small projects, where someone's doing a septic repair and the system's out front, it didn't have to go to conservation, and no one else is really kind of watching it, and you'll get complaints that, from neighbors, that they're tracking a lot of soil into the street, and then it rains, and that all goes down into the, into the system.
So they're going from one acre to any disturbance?
Any, any land disturbance.
So we don't need to vote on anything?
No, no, just, I'll try to, I'll try to work with you folks to coordinate a time where we can do one presentation.
All right, sounds interesting, and chair's report, oh, might I have something to put, so Stephanie has been in touch with Judy Barrett, who I'm sure most of you remember, not, not Chris, but Judy is a land use expert, I guess, right, and she's worked with us previously in writing zoning, and she worked with us in the Creaseit Commercial District, and, so, so Stephanie's been in touch with her in regards to doing the same with the Village Business District, where we, we kind of lopped it off last year to.
For the mixed use and the.
Yeah, for mixed use, we kind of lopped off when we were doing the compact neighborhood, so that'll be a fun summer project, that hopefully we can present at special town meeting in the fall.
Right.
I think that's all I've got, it's exciting times, we've got a lot of, you know, it's, you know, we kind of enjoy this stuff, right, don't we all, and, you know, we said tonight, I mean, really looking forward to seeing 661 get underway, and that's really the.
It'd be nice.
You know, 138's ready to go, there's nothing else available in that, because it was for commercial and mixed use.
Yeah, 138, the sewer's done.
Yeah, sewer's done, yeah, so I'm, I paved, I was able, I was actually to drive on smooth pavement this morning, I got my coffee, it was fantastic, and it was a little bumpy there for a while, you know?
Yeah, it was bad.
Poor Marley, my little duck, she's jumping all over the place.
Yeah.
But, you know, that's, that's going to be a project playing honks like all of ourselves always talk about, but I think folks at home, that's, that's going to be transformational for the, for that, for southeastern, eastern, and, and exciting, exciting to see it happen, and I think we have a lot of, we'll have a lot of fun advantageous proposals for Easton before us in the next, you know, six months to a year, so it's nice to see all of our hard work with the zoning changes we've done, and it all tied into the master plan, and we'll be able to stitch it and communicate to the town how this is, all the ideas, when we all work together, what we came up with, so, it's, it's fun, it's fun to get out of theory and get into actuality. That's all I have, I know, so we have board signatures, do you have anything else, Stephanie?
Nope.
Want to bring us home? Big guy?
He was getting ready to jump in there, yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion to.
Peter knows better than to step on.
He was, he was willing to go, so I was, all right, you got a second? I made a motion.
A very good one.
I seconded.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Thank you, Ecat, thank you, Easton.